Hello, everybody, and welcome. We are here to celebrate Pastor Reed. He is going to be running for Ward One City Council. Yay! Woo! We have an awesome program today. We have a few dynamic speakers who are going to be coming up, and it also includes Pastor Reed himself. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Victoria Khan. I met Pastor Reed about a year and a half ago, and honestly, I needed rental assistance, and he was right there to help me. And, you know, a lot of people would normally just give that assistance and go on about their life, but Pastor Reed didn't do that. He kept contacting me, making sure I was okay, and now, today, I work for him. You know, he helped me grow. He helped me to reach my full potential, and I believe with all my heart that that's what he will do for Ward One. So, that's why I'm here, and he has my full support. Now, let me share with you a run of the show. We are going to be having Dr. Malcolm Newton. We're also going to be having Ms. Maisha Fields. We are also going to be having a former Senator and Commissioner Fields here, and then Ms. Jeanette Rodriguez and Pastor Moses. Now, let me introduce to you Mr. Malcolm Newton. He is a member, a musician, a scholar, and a founder of the Denver Institute of Urban Studies and Adult College, where he is the Executive Director. He is also a Harvard -- he is also a graduate of Harvard University and has degrees from Cheney University of Pennsylvania, Oxford University, and the University of Cape Town. Please help me welcome Dr. Malcolm Newton.
(Applause). No. Victoria. Wow. I didn't ask for that. That's just the leading of the Almighty. I want to say that I'm happy to be here today, in spite of the weather. We're here for something very, very important. And I want to say also that thank you all for being here as well, because it took courage and strength and will to get up out of that bed and to say, "I'm still going to make it. I'm going to go and support my dear brother." Reed and I have been knowing each other for a long time. When he was passing the church way out in Centennial, the Wesleyan Church, and he, I would say, is a man after God's own heart. And he -- his church was basically an all-white church. We call it the suburbs. And a mutual friend of ours brought me there to introduce me to him, and we did a Martin Luther King special. We had a Martin Luther King Day. We presented Martin Luther King Awards to the people in the community. And that mutual friend passed away at 40 years old. Never married, born in the Philippines, African-American guy. And we were part of the funeral service, so I got to know Reed a little bit better at that time. And one day, I got a phone call saying he had some people in his church that wanted to make a contribution to an African-American organization in the community. And I was surprised to get the call. And so, he directed them to me. And so, naturally, they did follow through, and we got that fund to go to the community. And since then, Reed and I have been together ever since. And I didn't understand him moving down to this neighborhood. You know? Because again, it goes back to who he is. He wanted to be more in touch with the community, more in touch with the people. He is a leader after God's own heart. The revolution will not be televised, but it will be, because Reed is a man -- I see him as a prophetic. He's a prophet in his own calling. He's a community leader, and he has my support and my endorsement. And I would say, just working with him with Mosaic Unlimited, his heart is for families, his heart is for young people dying in the streets. He wants to do something about it. He's tired of seeing our young people killing each other. He's tired of seeing leaders on our city council and otherwise that are not interested, are not concerned, and there are many. And I will speak out and say, "They're ready to argue about theoretical things that doesn't do anything to touch our community," but he's a man, if he's in that office, he's a man that's going to make good trouble. Like John Lewis says, "Go out and find yourself in good trouble." And that's who he is. I can't say anything more about him. Well, I can say a whole lot. But I can't say any more about him than the fact that he's a man that looks for good trouble, and the good trouble is bringing solutions, not just rhetoric, not just talking, but people that know him to bring solutions, to bring action. He's a man of action to our community, and many of you know that, or you wouldn't be here right now. And so, I trust that we are not just here today, but we'll follow through. We're knocking on doors. We're putting brochures and posters and doing social media and promoting this good man for a good cause, not just talk, enough talk. This is the year. Many of you voted Donald Trump, and I know you did secretly. But we're going to fight against that through our friend. I keep saying Pastor Reed. I just want to say Reed. And so, I just want to look at it. So, he's not a person to say, "Ask what your country would do for you," or "What your community would do for you," but ask what you can do for the community. And so, again, I believe skin doesn't matter. I believe that he has the embodiment of what Dr. King was all about. I really believe that, and that's why we're here today, and that's why he's a great public service. He doesn't need to be in the political realm, but he knows he can affect more change if he's there on that level. I just want to say that to you. He's already -- Martin Luther King was not a political. He was not a politician. He was not a politician. Am I right, Senator Rhonda Fields? King was not a politician, and he made great enrolls that even last 60 years after he was dead. The same thing with Reed. At heart, he's not a politician. He's a man that cares about people, and you all know that. But let's do -- let's support him, not just here today, but let's work with him until this campaign has ended. Jesus had only 12 disciples. He turned the world upside down. Look how many is here. What can we do in nine months to promote Reed to disposition of City Council? What can you do? What can you do? What can you do? Think about it. What can you do? There's something here that everyone can do. No excuses. You've got two legs, two hands, and a brain. We can all do something. I want to say at this time, I want to introduce a good friend of mine, my dear sister, who now calls me by my nickname, Butch. She learned it from my sister, and that is my dear friend and colleague, Nurse Maisha. And Maisha has been the backbone of the Dayton Street Opportunity Center, the backbone. She's been bringing programs in here from diverse communities to where we had the Dawn Clinic in here. We have the different community meetings that are taking place in here. The Black Civic Engagement Committee is here. I mean, this is where action is, and that's why we're here today. And Maisha is responsible for a lot of that action that takes place here at this center. And she's part of the -- is it Bradley's or Brady's gun thing? Whatever it is? I can't -- Maisha, come on up. So, let me introduce you to you, Maisha. Maisha Fields. My blessing.
All right. Is Aurora in the house?
Yes.
She says it is. Oh, and look at her little shimmy. Did you see the little shimmy? Aurora is in the house, and I can tell you as a forever resident of Aurora that it is an honor and a privilege to be here today and to say yes to Reed Headick for Ward One. Let's say that together. Yes, to Reed Headick for Ward One! That's right. We're going to get -- we're going to make sure he is elected, because, you know, around us, there's a lot of chaos. And Reed knows about chaos, because I'm chaotic. I make decisions on a whim. At any moment, I could say, "We're going to let the homeless stay here tonight." At any moment, I could say, "We're going to feed 500 people," and he says, "Okay. Okay, that's what you want to do." And he helps me, and he shows up in ways that I have never seen in my life. You ever tell your children what to do, and then you come back home from work, and then they just completely ignored everything that you said? As a matter of fact, they made it worse. Reed is not that type of partner. He is a partner who looks at the real challenges that we are facing in Aurora. You know, whether it's the fact that the egg -- prices of eggs are $8, or the fact that if you walk up the street to buy eggs, that store is now closed, and so you cannot get eggs. And so, I've seen him be an advocate for food injustices that we see every day right here in Aurora, where you can't get access to a tangerine or those little -- or a cutie. You guys like -- I love me a cutie. Cuties are so good. We can't get cuties. We can't get eggs. We can't get jalapeno -- jalapenos. We can't get tomatoes. But what can we get in Aurora? Well, you can get a fifth of vodka. You can go right next door without even asking us. The City of Aurora approved a vape shop right next to us, and we have children in this building every day. We have more schools in this community than anywhere else in the state of Colorado. But yet and still, a vape shop was opened right next door here and another one right at the corner. These are the issues that Reed is concerned about, making sure that everyone who lives in our community has a fair shot at becoming an entrepreneur, making sure our children graduate from high school, making sure our kids can read before they get to third grade, because if you can't read by third grade, then you can't learn. There's nothing else you can do if you don't know how to read by third grade. Making sure -- I've seen Reed deal with our patients who are struggling with mental health illness, working with Aurora Mental Health. And so, when we talk about a leader who's on the ground, you know, I see why Taylor Swift likes Kelsey, because he's a winner. And we should all attach ourselves to winners, people who know how to assess and how to know, you know, "It's okay if I get tackled." Now, don't tackle me, because I'm real pretty, and I don't like people touching me. But Reed is ready for the full contact sport of being an elected official. You've got to be able to have some thick skin, and he has the thick skin, but also, he has empathy for us, for our babies, for this community. He is tried and proven, and so, I support Reed Headick, not just as my friend, but also as my business colleague, to be our next Ward One representative. Where'd she go? Where'd mother go? Where's mommy? Next, I want to bring up Senator Rhonda Fields, Commissioner Rhonda Fields. When you talk about another person who, you know, you know, this is Peyton Manning coming to the stage right now. Okay? Right, this is Peyton Manning. And so, when we think about leadership and being in these positions and being a full contact sport, it requires people who show up. You know, they show up to the meetings where they're liked, and they show up to the meetings where they're not liked. They show up to listen, and then they show up to take what they hear back to community. And my mother, who I'm so very proud of, is the first black person to be elected in Arapahoe County. Not only that, there's only three people in the whole state of Colorado who have served in the State House as a representative, as a senator, and now as a commissioner. So, she's number three on the list. I told you it's good to hang out with winners. And so, we're so happy that you're here today, and you can talk about your relationship with Reed Headick, his vision, and your shared vision for Aurora.
This is my daughter. And you know, there's a saying that says that an apple doesn't fall too far from the tree. Well, she's my seed, and she's my apple. So, thank you, my dear daughter, for that lovely introduction and for your support of our friend and our colleague, Pastor Reed. When I think about Pastor Reed, I think about his vision and his promise for Aurora. Way before I caught it, it was Maisha and Pastor Reed who came together to collaborate on what East Colfax Corridor should be like. And when they came together, they didn't just do it on their own. They involved the community. And by that, they had meetings where they had opportunities to talk to people in this area. What should a community center look like? What should government look like? What should outreach look like? This took like eight months. So, what you see today is something that just didn't happen like this. It took the input of community and our youth. They armed youth with these cameras, and they went out and they said to them, "Go out and tell us what challenges you see in our community." They talked to the seniors and asked them, "What do you see that we need to do as it relates to making sure that we have an opportunity center that addresses the issues and the challenges that the community is facing?" They didn't do this independently. They worked with City Council. They worked with the city manager. They made sure that they had collective voice into making sure that whatever we did in this building was reflective of what the community needed. This was like, what, 10 years ago? 15? Wow. Time does fly. 15 years ago, when people didn't have a vision for what this community needed, they were already planting the seeds in reference to projecting what the community needed by getting their voice involved. I can tell you about Pastor Reed. And Pastor Reed, the way I know him as a partner in this, is that he's not focused on someone's culture. I know that that's important. He's not focused on someone's faith, even though that's important. He's not focused on someone's economic status in this community. He's not really -- he's focused on it, but it didn't drive his desire to want to do what's best for this community. His focus has never been on the elite or the connected. It's always been about the people that surrounds the center and about the people that are on the margins of society that don't have a voice. And that's how Maisha and Pastor Reed came together, because they weren't focused on what's popular and what's slick and what's shiny. They were focused on the needs of this community. And the needs of this community is great, and Pastor Reed has been a champion for the needs of this community when it was not popular. And when he called me and he told me that he wanted to run for the City Council for Ward One, I said yes. And the reason I said yes is because poor people do not have lobbyists. I've worked at the city, at the state Capitol. There's very few people that are down there championing those who are poor. There's very few lobbyists who are championing for children. But you have large corporations, like the tobacco industry, who just camped out next door to us, that's wanting to do vaping or whatever they're doing over there. But these organizations have lobbyists where they can influence public policy. But East Colfax Corridor needs a champion. We need a champion for what's going on right here. Everything can't be on the shiny side of Aurora, which is going south. We need a strong voice for this corridor, for this place, for this community, and I believe that is what you'll have. And -- not commissioner, I'm going to elevate you. Councilman Reed for Ward One. So, I'm going to end my remarks here, but I just want you to know, Reed, I've never had the opportunity to really publicly recognize you as the man that you are, the man of faith that you are, the family member that you are, the committed community member that you are. He's proven. 15 -- he's proven. He is a proven leader. We don't have to look anywhere else. 15 years in this center, them partnering together to address the needs of this community is unique. What other council member do you know that has a community center and that is addressing those who are unhoused, those who are dealing with insecurity as it relates to food, those who need access to housing waivers? When you come through that door, the Opportunity Center is making sure it's not a revolving door. We know how to connect people to the resources that they need to break their cycle of poverty. I don't know any other council person that's doing that. For Pastor Reed, this is a passion, and his passion is not about celebrity. He's not doing this to be popular. Isn't that a song in Whiffle? "I wanna be popular." I know. Our family is obsessed with that wicket and all that stuff, but that's who we are. We love theater, we love music, and we love to dance and sing. And Pastor Reed just lets us dance and sing and do everything that we want to do. Pastor Reed, I adore you. I admire you. I admire the vision that you have for the City of Aurora. I think the City of Aurora needs you. When we think about the complexity of what's going on at the federal level and at the state level and at the local level, we need you at the table, because the saying goes, "If you're not at the table, you're on the menu." And the people in this community have been on the menu. That's why you see the boarding up of businesses in this community. There's nobody advocating for us for opportunities. And so, I am just pleased to have this opportunity to publicly share my endorsement for Pastor Reed for Councilman for Ward One, and I hope that you join me. Thank you, Pastor Reed, for all you've done. Okay, we're going to have to do a selfie. Come over here. Over here.
Oh, oh. I did.
You guys have to stand up and be a part of this selfie, because I'm going to promote this. Okay. Everything? One, two.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor.
Hey, thanks for being here this morning. It is an honor that you would come out on a snowy morning and, you know, be a part of this. Thank you. Thank you so much. So, let me take care of one piece of business, and then we have some other things to do here, okay? So, my name is Reed Headick, and I am announcing officially this morning that I'm a candidate for -- to represent Ward One on City Council. So, that was the business of the day. We could just stop and go eat pizzoli, but we're not. So, let me have my family and those of you wearing the shirts, come on up here, join me. Yeah. Come on up here, Grace. Come -- no? Okay. There we go. So, it's about four months ago now that two of my very best friends and men that I really admired from the community, Mateos Alvarez and Johnny Watson, invited me to lunch, to breakfast. They said they were going to buy my breakfast. I knew something was up, because they don't typically buy me anything, but -- and something was up. They asked me to consider being a candidate for Ward One City Council. We knew that Crystal Morillo, who had served, was not planning to run again, so it was an empty seat, and they asked me to consider that. My first response is, "No, I don't think so. I don't think I'm going to do that." But I said, "I won't say no to you this morning. We'll get together again in a couple of weeks, and we'll have another conversation." And in the weeks that followed that, something that sort of tipped me over the edge was what I'm calling the intersection between challenges and opportunities in our community. We do have some challenges in our community, even though our community is a beautiful place, is an amazing place. It is my favorite place that I've ever lived in my life. It is a place that I've found people to be warm and caring and generous and good people, working hard to try to make a living and take care of their family. Hopefully, their family would have a better life than they had. And so, I love our community. It's filled with beautiful, wonderful people and all kinds of other good things. But there are some challenges. There are some challenges that we face, and as we've talked about, we have some public safety challenges in our community. There are times that people don't feel safe, and people are not safe in our community. Just about every week, we can read about some real tragic, violent thing that took place in our community. The other stuff doesn't get advertised. That sort of gets blown up everywhere. And so, sometimes, our public safety is a problem that is perceived, and sometimes it is actual reality. We also have other problems, and Senator Fields -- see, I did it too, Senator Fields. Commissioner Fields reminded us that there are boarded-up buildings and businesses around us. There's some real economic challenges that we have. We also have other problems and Senator Fields, see, I did it too, Senator Fields, Commissioner Fields reminded us that there are boarded up buildings and businesses around us. There's some real economic challenges that we have. The people of our community, generally speaking, have, have been, sort of their wages and their income is stagnant and all the costs and things get higher. And so it just pinches people in this kind of a community more than any other place. There are some challenges that we have, but at the same time, at the same time that there are challenges, there are amazing opportunities in our community. And it goes back to the people of our community, the people that really care about one another. I remember just shortly after we moved into our house, just a few blocks away from here, there was a knock on our door late at night one night, and I was startled by that a little bit, and it was our neighbor from across the street that we had not even met yet. They came over and said, your garage door is open. I had not had that when I lived in the suburbs and some other kinds of places. All the time we bump into people that are warm and friendly and caring. They care about their neighbors and they care about each other and they care about their families. That is an incredible asset that we have in this community that you need to, need to understand. That's unique. That's not the way it is everyplace else. At the same time, we have the city who is finally paying some attention to us, have hired the consultants, Puma, that some of you have heard about, and they're invested some money to try to get these consultants to help us to figure out how to revitalize the Colfax Corridor. I don't know if it's gonna work, but it gives us a shot that we have not had before. And it's an unprecedented shot where the people of Puma seem to have a proper understanding of being able to develop and have development without displacement, without pushing everybody away, not just sort of scraping entire blocks and putting up big shiny new buildings, but really invest in the community that it is because there are things in this community that are worth saving. And, and, and so that opportunity that we have, coupled with the challenges we had, I just said, I have to jump in. I have to be a part of this. I'm not gonna sit back and say, well, maybe next time it'll work or somebody else should do it, that I decided to jump in. When jumping in, there's three priorities that we have, you know, with the campaign, and already sort of hinted at a couple of them. First is public safety. We've got to do a better job of public. It's not acceptable that people in our community are afraid to go out at night, that moms are afraid to have their kids walk to school. It, that's not acceptable for that. And that we have to do a better job of making this a safe place and make people feel safe in this place. And it's something that happens in a comprehensive kind of way. We need the police department's involvement in that. But it's more than a police issue. The city, other agencies, from code enforcement to zoning and permitting, all need to be engaged. Our businesses need to be engaged. All of us, we need to be engaged in that. And as we come together, I think we can make a difference and we can make this a safer place and make people feel safer in this place. A second priority is around economic revitalization. We've just talked about how this is a tough place to live, and all over it's a tough place to live, but especially here in a place where historically has been neglected by government, has been neglected by others, that, that we feel it more than anyplace else. My neighbors and my friends here feel that first when the prices go up and the wages stay the same. And so we have to invest in the businesses that are here. We can't lose more. And, and, and here's something, bad news, I guess I get to deliver here, that we lost Walmart and we lost Walgreens here recently. They're not coming back. We're not gonna see them again. Maybe years and years and years, but they're not coming back. But there are hundreds of entrepreneurs and small business people. And I think, Ken, you were the first one to point out how many people open new businesses, a lot of them home businesses, but we live in a community of entrepreneurs and people that work hard, that would love to start new businesses, businesses that need to be encouraged and helped and supported, businesses that are, that are started by, you know, some of the people that historically have not been supported in starting businesses. In fact, it was one of my friends that pointed out the other day that in our community, up and down Colfax, there are very, very few black-owned businesses. He says, beside barber shops, there's not much. That shouldn't be, because we know that there are entrepreneurs and talented people in that community that could and should be starting businesses and should be supported. We know that there are people that speak different languages, that come from other countries, that they're, that long every day to start a business and to do something significant, to own something that will support their families and produce generational wealth for their families. We have to support those men and women with businesses and those that want to start businesses by helping them find all the resources that sometimes are already present in the community they just don't know much about. They need to be introduced to the Small Business Development Center, the Small Business Administration, other city and county and community resources to help them start and thrive in a business like that. Same time, we need to help people that are renting become owners of their homes. And so all of those things are part of revitalizing the economy in Northwest Aurora. Third thing I want to mention to you is, is community building. We have to do this together. This, this has to be something that we work together on. So let me tell you another harsh reality. I can't do this stuff by myself. I am not smart enough. My family is verifying that. There's not enough time. Any one single person cannot do it. But together, we can do a great deal of things. And it's time for us to get out of our silos and, and out of our specific communities and reach across those borders. I think this could be a beautiful place that has not ever been seen anywhere, where there's men and women and boys and girls that with every kind of different skin tone and, and the historical background and culture, that really care about each other enough to say, I have your back. I will support your business. I am gonna be with you. We are brothers and sisters. We're here together. We're gonna do this together. That this could be an amazing place. Now, there are places around the world, there's, you know, in Africa, there's Little China and, and there are other places that, sort of a single ethnicity that is thriving and growing, really some great things happen. I see in Northwest Aurora a community unlike any other, where we thrive together even though we are different. And we, we thrive because we are different. And I think we can be, we can be, you know, blessed and used and unique in that kind of way. But we, we do this together. We do this together. So this is the important time, I was already gonna do it, thanks for the help though. This is the time I want to introduce some of those people that, that are together already here behind me. So first of all, let me introduce my wife, Joy. She has put up with me for lots of years, lots of years. Lots of years. My daughter Tina. Her husband Seth. My son Tyler. His wife Alisa. My granddaughter Riley. Oh, back there is my brother Brad, back by the door. I also want to say a special thanks to some of the people that have worked hard on this campaign already. They've done amazing work. I want to thank the one who's sort of leading this effort, my friend Mateos Alvarez. Other members of his group, Johnny Watson was one of those early ones that came and we had breakfast, and he is with his family. His sister just passed away. But you can clap for him anyway. Not with us here this, this morning, Julie Spear has been really helpful in doing some of the video things, and you'll get to see some of her work in just a bit. And some of her team is here doing some of the camera work here. Want to, Tina is also a part of our campaign team. She is the one that designed our logo and has designed our website, is sort of heading up our social media stuff. Yes, yes. And then, oh, not here this morning, is Cristo Luna. Cristo is home in New Mexico with family. And then, and then Victoria, who takes care of me and makes sure I'm headed in the right direction. Also want to thank some of my Mosaic family. Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys, for being here. And I want to thank you because together we can do something important here in this community. I sometimes am embarrassed by my lack of language skills. Many of you speak several languages and, and do that so well, and I'm jealous of that. I, I speak one language. But, but I'm trying to pick up a few Spanish words anyway, and I'm really pretty proficient in going and ordering at a, at a Mexican restaurant. I pull that off quite well. But one of my favorite words that I've learned in Spanish over the years is juntos. You guys, you guys know that, right? Together. Together we can do things, juntos. That, that by myself, this isn't gonna happen. But together, juntos, we could do something really special. That by, just by those of us up here, that we're not gonna be able to accomplish all these kinds of things, but we can do amazing things together, juntos. I want to invite you to join this movement as we, as we reimagine and reshape this part of town into a place like none other, a place that we can be proud to live, where our friends and neighbors and relatives can live and thrive and grow. And it doesn't matter what the color of your skin is or the country of origin or what language is your first language, that we thrive together, juntos. Come and join me as, as we, if we do just that, okay? Those of you from my Mosaic family, you know that this is not good enough. That was not a good enough response. That was, that was kind of tepid response. Can we do this together? Better. That was better. I was born and raised in South Dakota, grew up on a family farm. It was a great place to grow up. I loved high school. I probably paid more attention to sports than I did academics. Then went to, in Bartlesville, Oklahoma. Got a job right out of college and started, you know, my work in a small rural church in North Dakota. And so was there for three years, then spent some time in Aberdeen, in South Dakota, and then moved out here in 1985. My wife's name is Joy. Our first date, I was 15 years old, she was 13. We got married when I was 20, she was 19, and have been married a long time now. And we've had just a great life. We got married in 1976 and have two kids, Tina and Tyler. They're both married and three grandkids. So just feel so blessed with my family. We moved to Aurora the summer of 1985 and then moved to Northwest Aurora to Ward 1 in 2012. From the very beginning, we wanted to live here. Felt a calling to Northwest Aurora. Felt like that was where we were supposed to be, that it was a community that had challenges but also a beautiful, diverse community. And my story is kind of weird in that growing up in South Dakota, it was one of the most mono-ethnic places on face of the earth, but everybody had the same political views, same personal views, and sometimes I thought differently than other people but didn't feel like, especially as a kid, that you express those sort of things. Moving here just felt like home. It felt like I could be who I really was, and I've always sort of been curious about other, other people and from other places and languages and experiences, and I found that to be so enriching to learn about other people's journeys. And it was like 20 years ago now, I realized that I had lived in Aurora at that point for some time, but really wasn't very involved in the community. I was doing my job, raising my family, staying to myself. And it felt like convicted of that, felt like that was wrong, that I needed to branch out. And I suppose it's part of my personality that when I chose to do, take a different route, I jumped in fully, completely. And so I immediately met with local elected officials, asked them about what was going on in community, how I could be involved, how I could be engaged, and found open doors everywhere. And so I found myself involved in all sorts of things. Police department, use of force investigation, community groups, other nonprofits. I've done a lot of different things, gained quite a bit of different experiences, cash flow, understood costs and sales and a variety of things like that. Been involved in a couple of building projects, so starting new ventures. I always had sort of this bit of an entrepreneurial spirit. We started a daycare center, advertised and did all those things, all the policies and procedures, got all the government requirements, and then had to run that business. And then with the city, have been really deeply involved in many things around public safety and the police department. So I've served on several different police department initiatives and boards and committees. I served for six and a half years as chair of the Aurora Community of Faith. More recently, I have been the chair of the Aurora Key Community Response Team. So it's not a city group, it's a community group, but very closely connected to the city. I am not a career politician and really have no interest in launching a new career, but care deeply about this community. There's some real challenges in our community, boarded up buildings, businesses moving out, the sense and the reality of crime and people afraid, and that's just not acceptable. And realized that in many ways, I had been so involved in the community that this wasn't a different direction. My life wasn't changing significantly, it was just taking another step in that same kind of direction, that I had been serving the community in lots of different ways and that this was a way to actually enhance that same thing. That if I could be there when city council was making important decisions like hiring a police chief, things like setting the budget where there are millions of dollars are at stake that show the community priorities, using that influence from that position to work with the school board and work with counties and state people to make sure that our community was safer, better, more productive. And then all of those things, all the great things that are available in our community were available to everyone, not just a few, not just the elite, not just the rich, but were available for everyone. And so after all of that kind of soul searching and thinking, it just seemed like, yes, that was in fact the proper next step for me. And after talking to my family and other kinds of friends, I'm excited to be in this venture and moving forward and look forward to doing even more for the community in the
Thank you. Wasn't that fun to see all those old pictures? So Pastor Reed, so I will ask Joy, how long have you been married?
Over 48 years now.
I want to invite Commissioner Fields to come over here. And my name is Jeanette Rodriguez. I am an associate pastor here at Mosaic. I've been with Pastor Reed, I think it's been close to nine years now that I am here, I've been here at Mosaic. And we want to make an invitation for you to help us elect Reed because we know he's the best candidate, right? We know, we need him for Ward 1, right? So I'm gonna have you talk to our people.
Well, Pastor Reed, that was an amazing video, and it really captures your history and your legacy. and your legacy as relates to all of your service and your sacrifice for the city of Aurora. But the story doesn't end with this video or at this event. Each of you, I'm gonna challenge you to be involved, because politics is a full-contact sport. No joke. I have served in the House, I've served in the Senate, and I'm now the commissioner, and it requires citizen engagement. Your role as a citizen, your role as a resident, is so very important, because elections have We're getting ready to see what those consequences are about. So we all need to be rolling up our sleeves, we need to be pulling on our seatbelts, and we need to be ready to ride this next chapter, as it relates to electing Reed Haddick for Ward One. So what does that look like for you? You just can't be silent. You know, we need to make sure that we have people voting. I can't tell you how many people that did not vote in this district. And when people don't vote, you make a decision. When you don't vote, you're casting a vote for the other person. We need to engage voters. So when people say, "My vote doesn't count," yes, it does. Every vote counts. We need every vote, because that's how we elect people who are gonna represent our values and our principles. And Pastor Reed has a longstanding record of supporting this community. He's the frontrunner, okay? No one else has declared that they're running for Ward One but him. And by him being the frontrunner indicates that he's serious about winning. So anybody else that's trying to come after him, or anyone else who wants to run, we need to let him know that we have an army. We have a community who is ready to elect him. So that means you can't be silent, that means every opportunity, you need to talk about Ward One, the city of Aurora, and this election that is taking place. That's something little that you can do, is whenever you hear about whatever thing, my candidate is Pastor Reed Haddick. You need to promote him, you need to advance him, you need to make sure that everyone you talk to knows that he's your candidate, because we don't know who's gonna be coming after him. But we know that he's gonna be challenged. Because when you're in politics, there's no easy walk. So we know he's gonna be challenged, but just because he's challenged doesn't mean that we're gonna waver and that we're gonna shrink. Your role is to help him knock doors, raise money, host meet and greet candidates for meet and greet him, for people that don't know him. So at the end of this opportunity, this event, you need to sign up, I'm gonna host an event for Pastor Reed. Because we need to make sure that everybody loves Pastor Reed like we do. And the only way that happens is we have to open up our network. So the people that you know needs to know him, and we need to spread it out. Now, the election is when?
November 20th.
Okay. That's not a lot of time. But it's enough time for us to get, November time, I don't know about how you guys feel about time, but it's moving very, very fast. And how we allocate our time represents what we value. And if we value good representation, then we need to make sure that we value our time, that we contribute to his campaign. I don't know if you guys have been watching what's going on at city council meetings. Have you guys been watching what's going on? Don't you think we need Pastor Reed? We need his logic. We need his mannerism. We need that stabilizing harmony that he has. Whenever he walks into the room, I relax, because he doesn't like, I relax. And when you have that kind of demeanor, when you walk into a political environment, it is disarming. When you bring in your faith, you bring in your values, you bring in your legacy and history, in reference to what you've already done for East Colfax Corridor, that's powerful. And we cannot let anybody take this opportunity away from us. So I am asking each of you to make sure, before you leave today, to donate to his campaign, unfortunately.
In fact, do it now. Find your little card, even if it's a dollar, he's gonna need some money. We know that, you know, you need to walk the talk. We need people to stand up and say, "I support this man." We know that he's the best candidate for Ward One, so I need you to, right now, find one of these cards, come over here, get your phone, and even if it's a dollar, I don't want anybody leaving here today without saying, "I support this man." Even if it's a dollar, we need funds. This is a long journey, and he's going to need the funds, right? Sorry.
That's it. And I can tell you that we don't have any millionaires in East Colfax, you know, we don't have a, what's his name, Musk or whatever. But we have people power. So whatever you can do to donate to the campaign, you need to do that today. It needs to be continuous, whatever you can do today, just remember, you might need to do it again in two weeks from now, or a month from now, but it starts today. The hustle starts today. The grit starts today. He's our candidate, and we need to make sure that everyone knows, in Aurora, he's our candidate. And we need foot soldiers. You are our foot soldiers. And we need to make sure that we do everything we can to elect Pastor Reed for Ward One. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. We want to thank you for being here today, and I just want to say, you know, who doesn't love Reed? At one time, the way, go ahead and have a seat for a second, another second. The way that Joy describes Reed is like this, this is Reed. And I have learned, at first, I was like, "Oh, my gosh," it used to frustrate me so much. You could have, we could have meetings here, somebody banging on the door on the back, you know, someone, an unhoused person that wants to check his mail, or one of this and that, and I'll be, you know, jumping out of my seat, just because somebody's banging the door, and he's like this, "I'll answer when I'm ready." Just the way that he works, the way that he thinks, he is that calming force, and he's present. You know what we did yesterday morning? Yesterday morning, we were at the Dallas Street Apartments. Everybody probably knows where those are, right? Dallas Street Apartments, where all the issues are happening, because we knew, we heard that they were going to get notice of eviction. So at 10 o'clock in the morning, we are there, making sure that as the city and the police goes over there, door to door, to notify these residents that they have to leave, we want to make sure that we're witnesses, that it is being done with integrity, and that it's being done with dignity, and that it's being done lawfully. So that's where we were at yesterday morning. This man is boots on the ground. He cares, he's involved, and we need you to get him, to help us get him elected. So, specific things we need, please make sure we know we have your information. We get a database so that we could be informing you of other events as we go along. We need you to share that with us, so that we can have one database together here. We need you to host meet and greets. We want other people to know in your community who Reed is. We need you to come alongside and go with us, door to door. We need you making phone calls, we need you donating, even if it is $5 a week, $20 a month, whatever it is, till November, we need you to walk alongside with us, we need you to be soldiers with us, boots on the ground.
I don't know if I'm on program or not, but it doesn't matter. I want my friend Pastor Moses to come up. My friend Moses here represents the Burmese community, and really the entire refugee community in the state. My friend Benicia is back there from the leader, the Nepalese community. And so I want Pastor Moses to greet you in his, in Burmese, and some of his friends that he brought here, you know, to welcome them as well.
You've got one minute.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you, all the leaders and friends, and this morning here. So really, I'm so excited to see all different leaders and Pastor Reed, Reed Harri, this morning. So my name is Pastor Moses Tang Hong. I am a pastor of Mosaic Church of Aurora. I met him nine years ago, because I was looking for Myanmar Community of Korado Church building. So that time, very, very difficult to find out the building. So I met Reed Harri, I asked him, Pastor Reed, I'm looking for Myanmar Community Church to buy and to use, please hand me up. So that time, I didn't speak English very well, nothing. Just, I said, "Yes or no?" That's it. But so I asked God, God really blessed me, guided me, taught me until today. So Pastor Reed, however, and then that time, we talking about how we gonna build different communities in Aurora, how we gonna do missionary around in Aurora, not only here, but also other country. So really, my heart was broken because of my people. My people, Burmese people, Chin people, different group, different ethnic community leaders. Sometime, we don't know exactly why we are here, what we gonna do, what is our plans in United States, in our community. We lost our hope many, many times, but I asked God, I pray, I praise to God, and I asked Reed Harri to hand me up, how to build my Myanmar Community Organization of Korado. I don't know how to, how I gonna lead them spiritually, physically. But many, many times, I asked Reed Harri, he advised me, Pastor Moses, you have to do like this, you have to do bill like this. Many, many things I learned from Pastor Reed Harri. I learned many languages, that mean I learned English language. I learned how to build my Burmese community of Korado. So anyway, I am a director of Myanmar Community Organization of Korado. People look me, look like me, I'm small body. But God put his vision, Pastor Reed put his vision in my mind, in my heart, I learned many, many times and deeply in my heart, to do it, to lead my people, to do mission around the world. That's God has given me, Pastor Reed has given me to do more, any, many, many opportunities to do around in the city of Aurora. Sometime, you know, I don't have any ideas to do it for my community, for my church, for my mission, for my family. Hey Reed, Mr. Reed, Reed Harri, hand me, I would like to meet city council leaders in Korado. I don't know their name, because of my language barriers. So I asked Reed Harri, you have to do, you have to conduct like this, okay, come follow me, I can, I will introduce with the city council leaders. That time, so really, I thanked Reed Harri. Wow, that is really, my whole heartly talk about that. So sometime, you know, you all, different community leader knows things about my country, what's going on. Medical has been control and killed our people, many, many people, Burmese people suffering their life, day by day, years by years. That time, so really Reed Harri support me, many, many things, why I am here, why I support him. Let's support him together, and in love, the love of God. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you so much, everyone, for coming today. Let's give it up for Reed Haddick.